Good evening, Farmington Hills. Welcome to the exciting meeting of the Farmington Hills City Council for May 8th, 2023. And we're so glad to see almost a full house here today because we've had some wonderful award presentations that will be coming up in a little while. And so grateful for us to have Judge Parker lead the way and all the hard work she does. We're very proud of her and everybody who gives of their time and energy in this community. So thank you all for being here today. The first item on the agenda, which is not quite on the agenda, it's the way we normally start a meeting, and I'm going to ask Judge Parker to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is calling the meeting to order and the roll call.
Mayor Barnett, here. Council members Boloware, here. Bridges, here. Bruce, here. Noel, here. Massey, here. And Newland, here. Thank you.
Okay, next is the approval of the regular session meeting agenda. Dr. Massey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would first of all move that we move item number two down until after the proclamation. So those would be one, three, four, then two. And after that, approval of the agenda as published.
Okay. Support? Okay, it's been moved by Dr. Massey, seconded by Council members Noel and Newland. This is a straight-up vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay, passes. Next is the proclamation recognizing May 14th to 2023 as National Police Week. And Councilmember Boloware, will you read that for us?
The proclamation for National Police Week, May 14th to 2023, whereas Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week. And whereas National Police Week honors all law enforcement officers and peace officers, Memorial Day pays homage to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their communities or became disabled in the performance of duty and pays tribute to the survivors of these fallen heroes. And whereas we honor the men and women of the Farmington Hills Police Department along with their community partners and commend them on their impressive accomplishments in reducing crime in our community. And whereas the Farmington Hills Police Department has achieved reaccreditation from the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police, becoming one of only 12 Michigan police agencies to have obtained this status, and currently the largest agency to achieve this prestigious accomplishment. And whereas it is vital that our citizens know that Farmington Hills police officers are committed to practicing 21st century policing, encouraging positive community connections, and delivering superior services without prejudice or partiality. And whereas we are grateful to the members of our police department and to the community whose partnership helps Farmington Hills continue to be rated as one of the safest communities in the state and country each year. Now therefore be it resolved that Vicki Barnett, Mayor of the City of Farmington Hills, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim May 14th through 2023 as National Police Week, and call upon the citizens of Farmington Hills to recognize our Farmington Hills police officers, dispatchers, and civilian support staff, and honor all the dedicated professional law enforcement personnel across our country who preserve the safety and security of our communities.
Thank you very much. And we have our police chief, and I know that Lieutenant Luria and Detective Jordan are here as well to receive the proclamation. And a few others. Come on up. Thank you so much. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council and the city administration for their continued support. I'd like to thank the mayor, the city council, and the city administration for their continued support of their police department. And most of all, I'd like to thank our community and the partnerships that we have built within this community for their support. We couldn't do it without you. Having a great base of support for law enforcement is absolutely essential to our success. Thank you.
Thank you very much for all that you do. We really appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is the proclamation recognizing May 2023 as National Nurses Month, and I will turn this one over to Councilmember Newland.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a proclamation for National Nurses Month, May 2023. Whereas the profession of nursing was begun by Florence Steiner Gill, The Lady with the Lamp in 1854, when the role was basic caretaking in domestic tasks. The profession was influenced by the accomplishments of Claire Barton, Mary Eliza McConie, and Dorothea Dix, all nursing pioneers. Now over 4 million registered, practical, and advanced practice nurses represent the largest healthcare profession in our nation. And whereas skills required of the nurse are no longer basic caretaking, advancing from using a secondhand watch, a wristwatch, to take a pulse, writing in pencil on a cardex, wearing white dresses and nursing caps, to now wearing scrubs, lab coats, or street clothes, while recording electronic medical records, understanding life-sustaining technology and science while being the never-changing constant at the bedside. And whereas nurses are leaders to quality healthcare and the health of our nation relies on nurses to deliver primary and preventive care and health education in the acute hospital, chronic care setting, primary care clinics, the public healthcare agency, doing research, minute clinics, mental health settings, schools, where our military serves, hospices, inner homes, to wherever people need care. And whereas nurses have been the cornerstone in the care of our nation during a pandemic that threatened and took so many lives. A nurse has immense responsibility stepping into people's lives when life begins, when life ends, and everything in between. Nurses make a difference in life's journey. Our nurses have been given to our nation unending dedication, empathy, courage, endurance, sacrifice, and love. And whereas the recognition of the profession of nursing began in 1982, and this year the American Nurses Association selected the theme You Make a Difference to honor the roles and positive impact nurses make in our lives. And whereas, the quote by Ravi Williams, an aspiring nurse leader, quantifies the profession of nursing, to do what no one else does in a way that no one else can do it, in spite of all, that is to be a nurse. Therefore, be it be resolved that Vicki Barnett, the mayor of the City of Farmington Hills, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as National Nurses Month, and would call upon the citizens of Farmington Hills to honor registered nurses and to recognize the indispensable role these dedicated professionals play in keeping our community safe and healthy. And this will be accepted by Stephen Wachowski, who is the Director of Clinical Services.
And Nihad Desai?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would you like to say something?
On behalf of Corwell Health, Farmington Hills, I would just like to thank the mayor and the city council and the community for the recognition. We truly are a community hospital that serve our community, and when the first day I walked into Farmington Hills, I could feel the support of the community like no other hospital. So I'd like to say thank you to the community and that we are there for you to take care of you. Thank you.
Thank you. And now moving up to item number two on the agenda, recognition of children, youth, and families volunteer awards presented by Judge Marla Parker.
Well, good evening. It is so nice to be back here to give the volunteer recognition awards. We took a couple years off during the pandemic, so Madam Mayor, members of council, council of Farmington and Farmington Hills, all the honorees and guests on behalf of the Farmington and Farmington Hills Commission on Children, Youth, and Families, it is certainly my pleasure to resume the tradition of honoring volunteers. What I'd like to do at first is introduce the Chair of our commission, Sharon Snodgrass. I'm going to ask that all members and liaisons to the commission, would you please stand?
Welcome on behalf. Thank you. Welcome on behalf of the Commission for Children, Youth, and Family. We're all an honor that you could come and recognize some of the many volunteer people that we have in the community. And Judge Parker is going to announce them carefully and slowly. All right, so thank you all for coming, and congratulations to all the recipients.
So members of council, I hope that didn't scare you. I promise not to be too slow. So many of you, I'm sure, probably have been watching the news this weekend, as we've seen the celebration of the coronation of King Charles III in the United Kingdom. And it's interesting that as part of the celebration for the coronation, they designated today as a day to promote volunteerism, and they're calling it the Big Helpout. And I thought it was fitting that today of the Big Helpout, we are here to honor people who have helped out and continue to do so big time. So we will be honoring people in a number of categories, the distinguished public servant, youth, family, businesses, adults, organizations, and the George Romney Award. Now, a little bit of background about our commission and the Romney connection. Former Governor George Romney was labeled by some as the father of volunteerism. And he once said that volunteerism is the price of freedom, and through voluntary caring and sharing, that we blend our individual good with the needs of others and the public good. Also, he famously said, money doesn't solve problems, people solve problems, money helps. So this commission, when it was established 30 years ago this year, early on established volunteerism as an important priority. And Governor Romney himself met with us personally on a number of occasions to support and encourage our efforts, and for that reason, we established an award in his honor. So interestingly enough, when you take a look at the history, we are not the only organization that has a Romney Volunteer Award. In 1987, the National Points of Light Foundation and the Volunteer Center National Network established the Lenore and George Romney Citizen Volunteer Award, with Romney as its first honoree. Locally, the state of Michigan has a Governor's Service Award for Lifetime Achievement, named after George Romney. Recently, the Association of Fundraising Professionals of Metro Detroit gave out their Romney Lifetime Achievement Award. So we are in good company. And we know that volunteerism makes a difference, and we appreciate all the efforts he and his family made as our commission got started to participate, and actually, many of his family members attended our early award ceremonies. Now, as I noted earlier, our commission was established 30 years ago, and I'm still on it, but it was established by Mayor Nancy Bates, and it is in her name that the commission established the Nancy Bates Distinguished Public Service Award. And this award is to recognize a public servant, not only in their official capacity, but for their volunteer and leadership efforts that benefit the Farmington area community. And this year's honoree is Jim Nash. So I'm sure most of you know Jim Nash. Jim is currently serving as the Oakland County Water Resources Commissioner. He previously served on the Oakland County Board of Commissioners. He is a founding member of the Regional Partnership for Sustainability. He served on the Executive Committee of the Sierra Club, and served for three years on the Farmington Hills Zoning Board of Appeals. He was president of an organization called Pure Oakland Water Organization, actually president for 10 years, and that nonprofit was able to award $100,000 in scholarships at Lawrence Tech, Oakland University, and Rochester College, and award $300,000 for watershed festivals for students. Now, Mr. Nash has always been focused on environmental sustainability, green building, and regional cooperation, and under his leadership as Water Resources Commissioner, he worked with the Oakland County Executive Office to develop the Great Lakes Water Authority. And as Commissioner, he and his staff have organized and hosted several regional stormwater summits, bringing experts together with local governments and businesses, as well as academia, to learn about and advocate for green stormwater and solutions. Jim has raised his family in Farmington Hills. He's a 25-year resident. He incorporates those family values in his work with Oakland County, things like the fishing derby and the Easter egg drop. He has served on the Commission for Children, Youth, and Families since 2006, and certainly our community has benefited from his expertise and his longtime dedication as a committee member. And he's not only a hard-working public servant, but again, more importantly, a long-term Farmington Hills resident, dedicated not only to sustaining our natural resources, but to our family values and community. So congratulations on your award. The next awards, again, and all of these awards are so inspiring, but the next category of awards will be the youth awards. And it is amazing to me when I listen to the resumes of those who are winning the awards tonight, I wonder how it is they have time for school, because they're doing so many things. But I think maybe that just enhances their dedication to everything, including school. So our first honoree is Kimberly Ludi. And Kimberly volunteered for our own commission for Children, Youth, and Families, Kindness Rock Project, Rock Garden Project, and you may be familiar with it, at the Nature Center. And without support of this project as a volunteer, we don't know how we could have had enough volunteers to possibly staff these. She's been at the farmer's market, the library, at FAPN, all kinds of places, the teen library program, basically sharing information about the project. She's a student at West Bloomfield High School, and she shared the information about this Kindness Rock Garden Project with her teacher, and their after-school club started a Kindness Rock Garden Project that took place during their You Matter Week. And she's volunteered for the robotics team at the high school. She's walked in the Memorial Day Parade. She mentors younger students who are interested in robotics teams and STEM, and she's just in 10th grade. She spent most of the pandemic as a remote learner, and so obviously, I'm sure it's nice to get out and connect with everyone. Congratulations on all your hard work. Our next honoree is Alex Hamilton, and I see he's got his nice Raider tie on, so go Raiders. I think we have some Raider alums here also. So Alex has been on the leadership team for Youth United. This is his fifth year in that role, which is a summer community service week on the campus of CARES in Farmington Hills for middle and high school students. And the leadership team plans all aspects of the service weeks, from recruiting teens to planning the projects for the week. And then after that was over, last year, Alex made a video of all the accomplishments. At his church, he serves as the youth representative on the missions committee at Orchard United Methodist Church in Farmington Hills, which collects needed items and runs events to raise money for local charities. And as the youth representative, he's the liaison between the committee and the youths to include them in the church's missions. He's helped recruit and raise money and participated in the Crop Hunger Walk for seven years. Because of all of this active participation, he was asked to be the co-captain of their church's team this year with the responsibility, among other things, of handling the tech end of things, like the social media and all of that. He, on monthly with the church, assembles bag lunches for the homeless for the NOAA Project. He's participated multiple times in this project, and he was asked to lead the assembly project for the month of March. Amazing work. Congratulations on your volunteerism. And I didn't mention, he didn't forget his elementary school. He goes back to where he went to elementary school at Wood Creek and volunteers with his former kindergarten teacher and in the science program. So congratulations. Our next honoree is Will Friedrich. And you might recognize that name from someone we know, but Will volunteered all four years of high school for the Farmington Hills Goodfellows deliveries at Christmas time. He was a Salvation Army bell ringer in our community. He served as voice chair of the Ignatian Service Corps, leading weekly planning meetings and participating in community service projects within Detroit for the past three years. He's been an active member of Focus Hope Saturdays and Labor Ministry Tuesdays, supporting and delivering food and aid to the local citizens of the Detroit area for the past four years. He has worked closely with a Detroit citizen who transformed an area that was kind of a drug area, where drugs were bought and sold, and they changed that into the cross pollination corridor where food gardens are available for the community. He's been active as part of the leadership team for the National Honor Society, helping to plan and participate in a volunteer group, and his group was named the Bedside DJ, where students brought music to seniors in suburban Detroit. And I understand he just recently got a service award from his high school. So we are not the only ones to appreciate the great work. We know you'll go on to continue to do great things, and Madam Mayor, you may want to know that he's going to be a Boilermaker.
Oh, very nice. I have two of those.
Our next award is in the family award category, and I promise you, this one won't be short. Our award winners today are the Francis family, Rob and Melissa, the parents, and then Kaylee, Maddie, and Henry. And as they come forward, I will mention that if you are involved in the Farmington or Farmington Hills community, you have likely seen someone from the Francis family. Melissa is the current president of Farmington Youth Assistance. Rob is the current president of the Farmington, Farmington Hills Foundation for Youth and Families. Both are very involved in very public roles. Now, you may have seen members of the Francis family and not recognized them, and that is because sometimes they could be dressed as a leopard or a hawk, the respective mascots of Longacre Elementary or Harrison High School. You may have been aware of some of the work they've done without being seen at all. Melissa conceived the idea of the giving spot. The idea is kind of like the little free library idea where toiletry items, pantry items are left in a little wooden library for people to deposit or take as they need. And people in need can get those things anonymously, or people can stock it anonymously. There are about 10 of them now at the various elementary schools. All of them were built by members of the Francis family. They regularly work with Operation Common Good to make sure that they're sustained, and during the pandemic, they were stocking them daily. Now, Rob is a coach for the Hack Bots. Henry's on the team. Somehow, Melissa organizes the team's service projects, and I think everyone in the family somehow gets involved in some of those kind of things. This year, under Melissa's leadership, the Hack Bots won the Impact Award because of the great impact they've made on the community. Now, among the service projects are tutoring for the FAPN network. I know Henry and Maddie have done that. They've done things like a battery recycling drive. They volunteer at the farmer's market. They've done week-long work camps and service projects. Kaylee and Maddie, I think, repairing homes. Maddie and Henry went to the Dominican Republic with the IB program to do service and STEM projects for a week. I understand that there's more that I don't even have. So we all are grateful to the Francis family. We thank you so much for all of your service and leadership.
It's Boilering up all over the place here today.
I'll tell ya. Our next category of awards are the business awards, and our plaque award goes to Bush's Fresh Food Market. Again, many of us have shopped at Bush's, and so we probably are already familiar with some of their service work that is right there in the store and that we can see, but they have been a longstanding community business that gives back in our community for a while. They have the Cash for Education Program, where shoppers can register their reward card, and they give money back to the school groups in the area. They've been a long-term partner with the Farmington, Farmington Hills Education Foundation Toast for Education Event. They've donated the beer and wine and cheese for that event. They still donated for raffle baskets during the pandemic. They're also a sponsor and support the CARES organization and market, and for everything they do for CARES in supporting and establishing that market, amazing. They have given back to so many small programs and school groups over the years. They've done holiday food for the needy with various schools. They partner with the Farmington Public Schools and the Farmington, Farmington Hills Foundation Youth and Families for the Bountiful Backpack Program. So it's interesting, not only do they give to our community, but they give back in every community that they have a grocery store. This is something really extremely rare, and we are glad to recognize them for their outstanding work in our community. outstanding work in our community.[590.00][590.00][applause] Thank you. And if I didn't say it, anyone who's gotten an award, and we'd love you to stick around. After we're done, we're going to take a group picture with everybody. So thank you for sticking around. Our next business award goes to McElroy's Automotive, and the team there has gone over and above helping people who need car repairs. He takes in customers knowing that they have little money to pay for these repairs. And an example that was given by the nominator was that a mom was on her way to take her son to college, which was six hours away. She pulled into McElroy's Automotive because her car wasn't running smoothly, and she had two flat tires and two bare tires and was upset because of her financial situation. And they immediately installed four new tires on her car, sent her on her way at no cost. He's helped, they have helped CARES in Farmington Hills by fixing their automobiles, and these are vehicles that are put in use delivering food, picking up food, delivering to homebound folks, and are essential, and I understand never turns anyone away when asked for help. So I don't know if someone is here from McElroy's. No, but we thank them, and we will get them their certificate.[678.23][678.23][applause] Another business honoree is Tim Wasmer and Wasmer Brothers Landscaping. Again, this team has gone above and beyond for CARES in Farmington Hills. And if you've been to their big 10-acre property, they have made the landscaping there really beautiful. They did design all the garden beds there. They spent many hours grooming and making improvements on the land, and they got together and created something special in the atrium area, and they came up with a beautiful water feature that showcases the water and the rock stream along with the gardens, which is located in the middle of the CARES property. And many people have commented on that, and it adds to the beauty, and we thank the Wasmer Brothers Landscaping. I don't know if anyone is here to accept that award, but we thank them.[738.49][738.49][applause] I will now move on to the category of adult awards, and our plaque award will go to Christina Muay, who many of you may know is involved so much with the library. In the spring of 2021, she first approached the library and asked if the library could partner on a celebration for Asian American Pacific Island Heritage Month, which occurs in May, so here we are. And with her efforts, they will be hosting their third celebration this year, and it's bigger and better each year. Christina brought partners such as the Association of Chinese Americans to help sponsor portions of the day. She connects people with student performers. She makes calls to find volunteers. She contributes wonderful ideas to bring in more families, and she also volunteers at the library for a number of other tasks and supports them as a Farmington friend of the library. So congratulations and thank you for all your work.[810.00][810.00][applause] Our next honoree is Brittany Screecha. And what's interesting is that she was nominated by more than one person. So I think you can tell that everyone really appreciates her work, and when I look at some of the things going on in your life, it is amazing, again, that you have time to do all that you do. She is a tireless volunteer for the Farmington PTA Board. She's the chairperson of volunteering and special events. She led the efforts to pull off the back-to-school picnic, the trunk-or-treat, the elementary school dance. She's a constant presence at the school and all of this while working and being a student at U of M Dearborn. But she's very passionate, and I believe takes pride in knowing that she's doing good things for her community and for our future. Our next honoree is Roger Avi, and many of you know him, as he's coming up. He is the current chair of the Farmington Hills Emergency Preparedness Commission, which is a volunteer position. He is currently the chair of the American Legion Chapters in Southeastern Michigan, Finance and HR. He's the organizer, an organizer for the Farmington Founder's Festival Parade and activities, and tents, and organizer for the Light Up the Grand Festival of Lights and all those things, and we see him around at so many community activities. We thank you for continuing to serve the public, and I understand he was a heck of a math teacher.[923.91][923.91][laughter] Our next honoree is Thomas Hall. And Thomas has been a dedicated FAPN member, that's the Farmington African-American Parent Network. He's currently the president of that organization, and he's been committed to opening and closing the FAPN Super Saturday every day, every Saturday, which is a tutoring event for so many students. He wanted to make sure that the Farmington Public Schools community has provided the resources of free tutoring on Saturdays. And so much work, thank you so much. And I'm going to ask that you stay there for just a minute, because our next category is organization awards, and we are going to give a plaque to FAPN, the Farmington African-American Parent Network. And so FAPN has been around for quite a number of years already, certainly more than 10 years. And since then, FAPN has had a number of presidents, and their focus has stayed on reducing the achievement gap for African-American students. And while their name says FAPN, they welcome all students in the district to be involved in the tutoring program that they call Super Saturday. And that's a program that they host where adults and students, and often high school students, as we've seen, come, help students who may need help with homework or in a school subject that they're struggling in. So you can see a high school student assisting a middle school student. They work tirelessly as volunteers to support the Farmington Public Schools. And as an organization, it doesn't really get all the recognition I think that it should for the tireless work that they're doing with the tutoring, and they've hosted things, in addition to tutoring, things like college workshops, scholarship or financial aid workshops. And I don't believe they've won an award before, and they certainly are deserving of this. So congratulations to both of you personally and the organization.[1071.08][1071.08][applause] Our next organization award is the BNI Referral Factory, and this group of movers and shakers are always ready to step up and donate their time and talents, and each of them represents a variety of businesses that give back to the community in many ways. And as a team, they work to support each other's endeavors while including so many other good causes, and whether it's purchasing a house, supplying office cleaning equipment, marketing promotional materials, trucking needs for heavy moving jobs. They've given financial support to CARES and have donated countless items, including things like diapers, baby formula, and other non-perishable items. So congratulations to you and everyone in the group.[1123.47][1123.47][applause] The next group award will go to the Exemplar Club. Now, the Exemplar Club is an outstanding community organization that meets once a week on Wednesdays for lunch, and meet at Cowley's. And they provide members with the opportunity to share their time and talents with others. So hmm, this is a very social group, and they meet to discuss raising money for nonprofits that are in need of financial support so that they can continue to do their work to help others. The Exemplar Club has biggest fundraiser is their golf outing, which is coming up, June, I believe, 28th this year. And once a year, the Exemplar Club hands out checks to various community organizations amounting to about $40,000 each year. And some of the groups that they've given funds to are the Samaritan Counseling Center, Community Living Centers, Haven, Farmington Hills Hawk, the Meals on Wheels Senior Division at Farmington Hills, CARES, Visions Unlimited, the Graham Smith Memorial Fund for Suicide Prevention, Friends in the Park, Team Farmington Special Olympics, Girls and Boy Scouts, and so many more well-deserving nonprofits. Exemplars are really an example for many of us in making, to make a difference in our community. Our next group award goes to the Intake Team at CARES, and you've heard that name a bit tonight. And this phenomenal group of individuals are the people who are kind of at the front lines at CARES. They're often the first contact that people come when they really are in dire need of assistance. They handle all the phone calls for the intake purposes. And, you know, I really think it takes kind of a special person to be able to be a good listener, to offer compassion and kindness and assistance. They are all about service and helping others and helping others find resources in so many situations. They work with individuals and families in getting them registered to receive services from CARES. And once guests are registered, they meet and greet and assist guests on a monthly basis, and they are a kind, compassionate, caring group of volunteers, and they give generously of their time, and they'll cover for each other if someone's out sick. They just want to make sure that people's needs are met, and they do it with a smile. Well, we thank you. So our final award tonight is the Romney Award. And finally, it's my pleasure to announce that. I know that the Romney Award is usually reserved for big things, for long, making a big difference. And the George Romney Award this year will go to all of the volunteers at CARES.[1331.00][1331.00][laughter] CARES has over 100 volunteers who are really integral in ensuring that CARES can accomplish its mission of providing support services for those in need, whether it's food, clothing, support, 12-step meetings, all that goes on at the campus. And it's just an amazing place with an amazing group of volunteers, and the people who volunteer, they just want to volunteer there more. A really surprise, Todd, was that?
That was a definite surprise. Had no idea that was coming. I was here to support Chris, Bob, and all the others. But on behalf of CARES and our 100-plus volunteers, you just got to see a few of them, we are so greatly honored and humbled, and thank you for allowing us to buy the 10 and 1/2 acres six years ago, for supporting us through all these years. And as our last count, the 600-plus families that we serve each and every month, and 52% of them as of last month come out of Farmington Hills, we so appreciate all that you do and the support that we're giving. Many of you in this room support us, and we couldn't do this without the support of our volunteers and the support of each and every one of you. May God continue to bless our cities, because we are very, very lucky to be a part of Farmington Hills.
These are our volunteers this year. There are so many other people who make a difference in Farmington, in Farmington Hills. And as you think of them now, remember to nominate them next year. And I'll leave you with a final thought. Volunteers are not paid, and they're not, it's not because they're worthless, it is because they are priceless.[1456.33][1456.33][applause] We would like everyone who has gotten an award to please step up so we can take a group photo. And thank you, Madam Mayor, for allowing us to do that.
Our pleasure.
So we're going to take one photo with the award winners, and then afterwards, we'll take another one. If you're on the commission, you can join in for a second photo. Can we get everybody in, or do we need to find a second row?
Mr. Friedrich. Where do you go to high school? Okay.
You want to point? You want to skate here? We're going to try and join in if you want.
What? No. But I do know.
Todd, where's your award? You didn't get one.[1543.41][1543.41][laughter] I was like, where's your plaque?
We are, we are going to take, if Paul is in the control room, we are going to take a very short five-minute break so that we can all personally thank our winners and volunteers, and we will be right back.
And we will be right back.
Welcome back after our brief little break. As you can see, there's a lot of volunteer opportunities in the city of Farmington Hills, and we hope you will take advantage of it. Go on our city website, see what boards and commission openings are available, and feel free to sign up. We have some openings, and we'd love to appoint people to fill those spots. So, thank you to Judge Parker and to the Commission on Children, Youth, and Families for their hard work, and to our award winners, a hearty congratulation to all of them as well. Next on the agenda is correspondence. Does anybody have any correspondence that we didn't all receive?
I do.
Yes, Ms. Bolow?
Yes, I received a correspondence from an April pain regarding clarification on short-term rentals. I called Attorney Jopik this morning, had a brief discussion, and forwarded to him what was sent to me, but there is a lack of understanding on the residence part about what's a short-term rental and what if you rent, for example, like six months. You're not on the, any short-term rental sites like Airbnb or Vemo, you know, what's the distinction between not long-term rentals per se, yearly lease, but six-month lease, three-month lease. And I also forward a copy of the correspondence to our city clerk, Pam Smith. And I believe we're just going to speak with Charmaine at some point. Is that correct, Mr. Jopik?
Yes, if I may. Yes, I did communicate with Charmaine today, as well as City Manager McKeon, and there had, there is some background there that we have learned and will continue to follow up with that individual.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Hey, anyone else? I received an email from a woman who was having trouble with a neighbor's fence that I forwarded on to you both. We know the area well, and so I will hopefully work to address the situation so the resident has something a little more attractive in her backyard, so. And then I also received a letter from a woman who wants us to please remember that the Caustic Center is a beautiful facility, and that she would prefer that it be refurbished rather than a Hawk Annex. So, next item is the consent agenda. I will turn it over to Dr. Bruce, Mayor Pro Tem, to read the consent agenda.
Thank you. Item number six, recommended approval of award of bid for portable basketball units to Sheldon Sports North America in the amount of $15,980, CMR 52357. Number seven, recommended approval of award of bid for removal and repair of roofs for special services buildings to Weather Seal Home Improvements Company Incorporated in the amount of $60,000, CMR 52358. Number eight, recommended approval of purchase of a ride-on turf sprayer with Revels Turf and Tractor in the amount of $47,423.33. Number nine, recommended approval of request for employment under Section 10.01A of the city charter for Hawks Nest Aid. Number 10, recommended approval of request for employment under Section 10.01A of the city charter for driving range attendant. Number 11, recommended approval of the city council study session meeting minutes of April 24, 2023. And number 12, recommended approval of a city council regular session meeting minutes of April 24, 2023.
Okay, is there a motion? Mr. Bridges?
Madam Mayor, I move the council approve the said items numbers six through 10, as read by the Mayor Pro Tem, Randy Bruce.
Okay, is...
A second?
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Bridges, seconded by Councilmember Knoll. Any discussion? This is a roll call vote.
Councilmembers Newlin?
Yes.
Buloware?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that leaves two items. Dr. Massey?
Madam Mayor, I would move approval of items 11 and 12, as read by the Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, is there a support?
I'll support.
Okay, it's been moved by Dr. Massey, seconded by Councilmember Newlin. Any discussion? This again is a roll call vote.
Councilmembers Buloware?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Bridges?
Epstein.
Bruce?
Yes.
Newlin?
Yes.
And Mayor Barnett?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that brings us to public questions and comments. If anybody is in the public and wants to say a few words about anything in particular that's not currently on the agenda, please limit your comments to five minutes or less. When there are 30 seconds left, I will raise my hand so that you kind of have a feel of where we are. Okay.
You have a big hook, too?
What?
You have a big hook.
No, I don't have a hook. I just have a gentle voice, and then we cut off the mic.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Eugene Greenstein. I am a 36-year Hills resident. The value of our property depends on city services, which this council oversees, and the schools our children attend. Your last scheduled meeting with the school board was canceled, and to best of my knowledge, has not been rescheduled. I thought it would be useful to share with you my and another's comments last week to the school board. As you will see from the handout, our schools are not doing well, and neither are the Michigan schools overall compared to other states. Michigan ranks about 40th in the country. A large number of our students are not literate in reading and math as measured by the state. There is no sense of urgency to fix this problem, and the issue has been raised by many over the past year. It's fair to say the school board would not pass Management 101, and has no clearly defined objectives for the school's leaders to identify the issues and, over time, meet the standards of being, once again, one of the best school systems in the state. I would suggest you set a meeting with the schools and emphasize the importance of, once again, having schools that are among the best in the state. Actually, it should be one of the best in the country. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Greenstein, and you kept it short and sweet on a very important topic. Is Tammy Ludi here? Oh, there you are. You moved.
Since I was already here tonight, I thought it was a perfect opportunity to come talk to you about May being Mental Health Awareness Month. And I would like to first thank the city for including the Kindness Rock Garden in the video that was just, the Farmington Focus video that just came out. This was an idea that I actually had brought to the commission last year because I know community members, students, adults, everyone really struggles with mental health. The pandemic, I think, made that issue even harder for a lot of people. And so when I brought the issue to the commission, there was a lot of like, not sure about it. But then, as we moved along through that project, I will tell you, it was probably one of the most amazing projects we actually have done in our city because in four short months, from when we actually presented it to the commission till October, when we dedicated the garden behind the Spicer House, the Kindness Rock Garden, we had lots of community members involved. We had our Arts Commission, we had our commission, the Farmington, Farmington Hills Commission on Youth and Families, we had the library, the teens were painting, adults, kids, everyone was painting rocks. We put them all out in the garden, and over the winter, we know people probably didn't go to the park that much, but a lot of the rocks have disappeared, which means that the people in our community needed these messages because they took the messages, they gave them to others, they shared the beautiful rocks. I recently went to the park one day because I like to pop in and see kind of how, you know, what's left, and I saw a lot of the rocks because I literally hand sprayed every rock last year after all of our events with the top coat to make sure the rain or snow would not wash out the messages or the beautiful artwork that our community members did. And that day, someone had actually put a little rock next to the sign that said, "Spread Love." And I was like, "Ah," and it looked like a little rock that was like a heart. So I was like, "Oh, how nice that, you know, someone put a rock there." So, the goal of this project long-term is not that our commission owns this. This is a community project. The community will own this garden long-term. But this weekend, because we want to make sure that we continue to give these opportunities for people in our community, we are actually going to be at the Farmington, Farmington Hills Market on Saturday during the whole day, painting rocks. Well, last year, when I first approached him about painting at the market, was like, "Oh, I'm not sure about this. Explain it." But then, at the end of the day, he's like, "You were the head of the market, and you guys need to come back next year." So, we wanted to come back in May because of Mental Health Awareness Month. So we are going to be there this Saturday. I encourage you to come, share with others, come paint a rock. Anyone, no matter what your age, can paint a rock with a positive kindness message. And I hope maybe at your next meeting, you'll do a proclamation around mental health awareness.
Thank you very much. And this now brings us, is there, oh, somebody else? Okay.
I'm Dan Fantor, Chair of the Farmington Area Commission on Aging, and I'm here today because the commission has started, made a new project, and we're very concerned about the Caustic Center and its future, and the wonderful programs and services there, the swimming pool. So, we've just started a committee. We're not sure how to help. We know that the seniors who are partaking services at the Caustic Center, they love the services there, and we want them preserved, whether it's at Hawk II or Caustic Center or somewhere else. We're negotiable, but the services have to be preserved. So, if we can help in any specific way, we'd like to know.
Okay, thank you. We will keep you informed, and we would love your input and your suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hello, my name is Mark Forche. I went to the post office on 12 Mile and to talk to them about that little road between, you know about it, about the library and the post office. And in four, over 40 years, I've, it's like a little battle zone between the mailboxes and 12 Mile, and in 40 years, I've never seen it so bad. And it's in dire need of repair. We have all these road projects everywhere. It seems like it could be done. It's just a strip, but I see people driving there. I've gone in potholes, so it's time.
I agree.
Okay, we have mentioned that before at a study session. I believe, Mr. McKeon, is that a private road?
Yes, that's a private drive. Our Code Enforcement Division has been in touch with the post office in an attempt to get that repaired.
Okay, thank you.
They told me to come here, so I came here, but now we're, the post office is supposed to do it. Is that correct?
It's, post office is jurisdiction. It's their responsibility. It's private driveway.
Okay.
Follow up with that.
Councilmember Knoll?
I have a question. Does the post office, are they responsible for the entire road? Because that road goes back further than the post office.
Yeah, the, there's another office building behind, I think it's situated back behind the library. There's a, there's a limit of their responsibility, so there, it's a bit confusing, but there's another op, there's another office, another property owner that's responsible for the rest of the drive.
So it's a private road with two different owners. So is there a joint agreement out there that describes, has a legal agreement that shows who is responsible for what? I mean, when you have two owners of a private road?
That I'm not sure of. We can certainly check for a reciprocal agreement.
We may need to look into that further because, yeah, that road's been bad for years, and that could be, I mean, not only do we have to contact the post office and the other owner, but I think we need to look into that because that could be a hang-up. I could see them having a breakdown in relationships about who's responsible for paying what.
Okay.
And it's not that costly, it's a little strip of cement, so I hope it can be done.
It sounds like it wouldn't be all that costly, but unfortunately, they are.
Yeah.
Mr. Bridges?
Yeah, Mr. McKeon, so last time we were here, about a month ago, we had a conversation about this particular situation, right? We, about a month ago?
Yes.
What communication have you had with them, the U.S. Post Office?
We, my understanding is, like, as I said, our zoning, our zoning officers have been in communication with the post office and have sent them a letter of violation. I can follow up with city council on that, but that's my understanding. If they have not responded yet, I'm not quite sure, but I'm certainly happy to follow up.
Maybe a letter from you to the regional office downtown Detroit, who have jurisdiction over that particular office, to...
We can certainly do that.
Someone with some authority in regards to the decision-making. I think it's critical that we get something done on this. That's a very important area. Library is visited by a lot of our community members. It's a entry point, I mean, it's a place where a lot of citizens go through, and it's an embarrassment to the city. So if you could, put some urgency on that, I appreciate that. Thank you.
We should also send a letter to our congressional delegation.
That's a good idea.
So, that would be, we're working on it.
Okay. I'm not sure, there's Metroplex in Pontiac, which is a giant postal facility, and then there's another one in Detroit. I'm not sure who has jurisdiction over this one.
Regional office somewhere.
12 Mile, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I would, I wouldn't, 12 Mile, they're probably not going to respond, so we need to go above their head, I think.
Well, we're going to work on that, and so stay tuned for further updates.
Okay.
Councilmember Newlin?
I'll agree. Just coming up to the library this past Saturday, if you're coming eastbound on 12 Mile, it's the main entrance into the...
Right.
Into the library, because you can't turn left when you go past the library to go into the front parking lot. So it's a heavily, heavily used by our library patrons as well as the post office. So, I agree, as you, you brace yourself to, okay, I've got to go in there, and it's, it's very traumatic, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay, that means we can, I will now close the public questions and comments, turn it back to council, council member comments and announcements. Dr. Massey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'm actually going to tag on to Ms. Ludi's comments about May being Mental Health Month to let you know that we did have a Farmington Safe Community Conversation on youth mental trauma, youth trauma and mental health, which was extremely successful in my book. It was well-attended, and it was picked up, and council members probably saw the link to CBS News Detroit, and it was picked up not just here locally, but CBS across the country. It was broadcast in Kansas, Oregon, and California. So, what we're doing seems to have...
Touched a nerve.
Touched a nerve. So, that was a great event, but you're only as good as what, what did you do for me today? And so, I would like to say that we are having another community conversation. This one will be on June the 7th, again, here in council chambers, and this one is for active military veterans and focused on PTSD and mental health. So, that one is coming up. Just wanted to let you all know.
And if we could just change the fireworks law so that we don't have fireworks going off all the time, it would be a big help to our veterans, people who suffer PTSD. Any other council comp, yes, Ms. Newlin?
I was going to say, this is a very big night. I'm laze on to the Commission on Families and Youth. They have been just stupendous this past month, not only hosting the event this evening recognizing volunteers, but they're volunteers themselves. So, as I say, the, those volunteers, they necessarily don't have time, but they have a lot of heart, and their kindness does not go unnoticed. Another event that they also did this past month was that we had a career night at the Hawk. It's headed by close to 200 people, and so it's been revamped, so it's just not focused on youth, but it's focused on anyone who wants to start a career, change a career, and it, people are invited from all surrounding communities also. So it was a wonderful way attended event. You can go in and meet someone face-to-face about going to community college, joining our public safety, to joining the water commission. So, it was well-attended.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, it brings us now to city manager update.
Thank you, Mayor. Last weekend, Rosok held one of our household hazardous material drop-off days at Orchard, OCC Orchard Ridge campus, and we had over 1,200 vehicles that participated in that effort, so that was a good turnout. Also wanted to let everybody know that city's contractors will be out on the northwestern median at Middle Belt Road to do the next phase of landscape improvements for the northwestern highway landscaping. That's for council's edification and for the public's knowledge, that's a phased approach that we've implemented over the, over the stretch of that landscape island to make things fit budget and, of course, supply chain and labor concerns. Also, Monday, May 29th, at 10:00 a.m., is our Memorial Day Parade. Just wanted to let everybody know that. That is, of course, in Farmington, along Grand River Avenue. And I also wanted to say thank you to our beautification commission, who organized our litter walk on April 19th. That was in connection with Earth Day. And also, a big thank you to our Department of Planning and Community Development and our Public Services Department for employees that participated in helping to pick up over 20 locations across the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick question, could I?
Yes, Mr. Bridges?
Mr., yeah, Mr. McKeon, could you find out something about that Embassy Hotel located on 696? I think it's at Franklin, at 696 going westbound. It's a vacant hotel, and it's a, it's an ISO, we're coming into Farmington Hills. It's not in our city, of course, it's Southfield, but could you make an inquiry into city of Southfield, see if they have any plans for that Embassy Hotel on 696 at Franklin? It's going westbound on 696, and find out if does the city of Southfield has any contact with that building owner to install windows there? You got curtains flying through the window there. It's really an ISO for the city.
That's at Franklin?
Eyes, 696 westbound at Franklin, headed west.
I think it's the old double tree, southern, so on the north side of the road.
It's really a terrible, it's a site.
I know which one.
It's cracked, it's broken.
Where the old bowling alley was.
Yeah, that's a major problem. It's been that way for a while. Could you find out if the city of Southfield, they have any plans to contact the building owner, see if there's any type of thing they could put some pressure on that building owner to put some windows there or something, because it's terrible.
Be happy to do that.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay, anything else? And now, for some of the most patient people in the room. We are finally getting on to new business. Consideration of request from Motor City Jam JV LLC for a new Class C quota liquor license to be used at 37611 West 12 Mile Road, Farmington Hills. And I will turn it over to Steph.
Yes, this is a request for a quota city license. The city currently has one license available with three other quota licenses under moratorium at the time. This is a request for a daily jam. It's going, proposed to be a breakfast and brunch restaurant, and to be located on 12 Mile, where the former Panera building was located. The applicants are here. We did route this to all the departments, and there are no objections to issuance of the license. And if council determines to make a motion on this, it does require five affirmative votes. So the applicant lives here and can speak on behalf of the construction.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Twins.
They're brothers.
They're brothers, they're twins.
Yes, we are twins.
Okay.
Well, we're used to it by now, but happy to answer any questions you have on what we're doing. I know we sent over some stuff. Hopefully you got a chance to take a look at it. We have menus as well that we passed out, but my brother and I both grew up in Farmington Hills. Our main office is in Farmington Hills currently as well, so we run all of our restaurants from Farmington Hills. We have an existing restaurant in Farmington as well as at 12 in Hollister, which is the Tabouli Restaurant. Our company also does Red Robins, as well as some other concepts also. We've been in this business for a long time. This concept is something that's pretty special to us. It's coming from Arizona, actually, is where, there's only one right now, and we've been talking with them, and they want us to bring it here to Michigan. And we find this spot here in Farmington Hills, we think, could be a great location for this, to bring it here and be the first one, right, our home offices where we grew up, and get it going from there. We also feel that the city has a, has a, could benefit from a brunch spot that's a little different than everything else. It's not, you know, it's not a Coney Island, it's not, it's not fine dining, it's kind of somewhere in between, and it's not a Panera, and it kind of offers a little bit of everything, so that's what we're looking for. We want to offer that to the people of Farmington Hills, and we're excited for it.
Okay.
Question?
Yes.
Are you, what location? You'll be at the Panera location?
It'll be, yes, the former Panera location.
Okay, excellent. We appreciate you, your consideration in coming to Farmington Hills.
Yeah, absolutely. We're looking to take the whole spot. You know, the modifications aren't going to be significant to the exterior of the building. We have a few things, we'd like to make it more of an indoor-outdoor restaurant with retractable doors that'll open up, kind of give the indoor-outdoor flow with a little patio feel.
That's what we want.
And then, you know.
Desirable, thank you, appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Go ahead. I think Randy was Dr. Bruce.
I'm just ready to make a motion.
Oh, okay. You know, I'm so happy that there's consideration for another, just for a breakfast restaurant, that you could have a mimosa or whatever, and that's a really tight spot. Are you going to have enough parking in that?
That was one of the things we looked at, and we actually took a look at it. And actually, there's, there's more parking than it, than it seems when you first look at it.
In the back.
We also have access to all the parking in the back as well, which, that would be where our employees would park.
I know you have, as you said, Tabouli Restaurant across the street. That's one of my favorites. I think they have the best lentil soup in the city. It's really, really good.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, when are you going to, if the council approves tonight, when are you going to open, you think?
Do you want to take it?
Yeah, so basically, once the plans are approved, we plan on about a 90-day build-out, and then we'd open after that. So, realistically, probably end of summer, early spring, or early fall.
Early fall, Lions Games?
That's the plan.
All right, thank you, appreciate that.
Playoffs at least, right?
All right, gotcha.
Mayor Pro Tem, Bruce?
I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, that the city council hereby adopts the resolution for approval to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission for the request for Motor City Jam JV LLC for a new Class C liquor license to be used at 37611 West 12 Mile Road to be issued from the city's quota licenses available. The Insira Restaurant Group has many, many restaurants. They are experts at running and managing successful restaurants for decades, so I think this is going to be an excellent opportunity for the city, and I think it will be a very nice, well-run restaurant, so I'm looking forward to it coming into the city.
Okay, is there a second?
A second?
It's been moved by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem Bruce and seconded by Councilmember Knoll. This does take five affirmative votes. Is there any discussion? Oh, Newlin, sorry, thank you. I'm seeing double, and I didn't have a drink, you know.
I'm prepared, you know, I can get this off, you know. I might become a blonde, you know.
Okay, any discussion? No further discussion, roll call vote?
Councilmembers Massey?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Newlin?
Yes.
Buloware?
Yes.
And Mayor Barnett?
Yes, absolutely. Welcome home.
Yes.
We're excited. Yeah, thank you very much.
And the menu looks very yummy.
Yeah. Okay, and that now brings us to the attorney's report. Any questions?
No.
Seeing none, is there a motion to, dare I say it, adjourn?
A move, Madam Mayor.
Is there a second?
Yes.
It's been moved by Mr. Bridges, seconded by Dr. Massey, that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We, any, no? No. So we stand adjourned. Good night, Farmington Hills. We will see you in two weeks.